Good evening. Today is Tuesday, October 22, 2024. The time is now 5:31 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is now being called to order. We do have a quorum present this evening to proceed with our meeting. And welcome all of you to Georgetown County Council Monthly Meeting. Second monthly meeting, really. We'll ask our vice chair, Ms. Lydia Jean Johnson, to give us the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. Saint Francis, Francis of Assisi. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love with all my soul. For it is in giving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned. And it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen. And now for the pledge.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We move on down to the approval of our agenda. There's been a couple of requests, really, from the, on the agenda. We have a request to defer item 9A and also item 9C. With those changes to our agendas, their motion to approve the meeting agenda as amended.
I move.
Is moved by Councilor Newton. It's their second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda is approved as amended. We move down to our special reports and presentations. Nonprofit spotlight this evening is the Director of Community Engagement. It's Kara Moore from Low Country Food Bank.
So Ms. Kara Moore could not be here today, so you have us.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Singleton. I'm the Regional Food Center Manager for our Myrtle Beach facility, which handles Georgetown County out of that location. You can go ahead and change the slide. So hunger and food insecurity has many faces. I assure you that you're probably, you probably deal with people on an everyday basis who are dealing with food insecurity, and you may not be aware of that. Change a slide, please. So food insecurity is the lack of access to enough food by everyone in a family to lead a healthy and active life. I did share, we did share with, with the people in the council some specific information about Georgetown County. There are 6,730 individuals in Georgetown County that are living in food insecurity. And there's some information about what we actually distributed last year in Georgetown County, which was just over 2.5 million pounds of food, which 1.2 pounds is, is a meal. You can change the slide. So food insecurity in, in our community in South Carolina. 38 million Americans live in food insecurity. And there are 489,000 South Carolinians. South Carolina, South Carolina is in the top 10 in the nation for food insecurity. Over 153,000 children, 13.8% of children in South Carolina are food insecure. And there's more than 42,000 in the 10 coastal counties of South Carolina. And Low Country serves the 10 coastal. So this is our, our service area. We've got all the coastal counties. Low Country Food Bank serves those. We've got three facilities. There's the Myrtle Beach facility, Charleston facility, and we have one in Yemecee in Beaufort County, which is actually getting ready to, we're opening up, moving that one and locating it in Hampton County. But we do serve Ori, Georgetown, and Williamsburg out of our facility. So Northern Region, which is Ori, Georgetown, Williamsburg for us, 12% of people in the Northern Region are food insecure. About 55,000 people. 18% of children in these three counties are food insecure. And we've got 61 partner agencies. That's ideally how we serve our neighbors in these counties is through a partner agency. There's also a list of partner agencies that we've, we've given that are in the Georgetown County area. So our vision is to end hunger in coastal South Carolina. And this is a picture of the map in the counties that, that we serve. And I'm, we have a lot of information that's specific for the entire, entire food bank. So I'll let you go ahead and move forward on, on the slide. And so how we strategically increase our impact. Feed, advocate, and empower is how we, we work. We, we work on feeding those in need and empowering them and advocating for themselves so that they can break the cycle of food insecurity. So we work through, we have a retail rescue program and we, we pick up that food. We get food from donors and through, through monetary donations and through the USDA. And in our facility, we have a staff of about 12 people. About seven drivers. So we've got trucks on the road. Hopefully you, you've seen our trucks on the road. But we, we have that food. We distribute it through our partner agencies. And food insecure individuals go to our partner agencies to get that food.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Hannah. I'm the Agency Relations Manager for the Low Country Food Bank in our Northern Region. So I deal specifically with our partner agencies. And like Heather mentioned, we, we have about 55 to 60 partner agencies in the Northern Region. In Georgetown, we have 13 agencies. And five of those are open at least three times a week. So there's a lot of service opportunities available for those people that do need that food assistance. Nine of the 13 agencies that are here in Georgetown are USDA agencies. So they get that extra supplemental food through the USDA program. That's also available to their neighbors. We have four agencies here that are Fresh Express Partners, which means that they have, they, they get fresh produce to distribute to their neighbors. And it's a predetermined schedule that's set a year in advance. So there's specific dates that people can go to these agencies just to get good fresh produce. And six of the agencies that are here in Georgetown are part of the retail rescue program that Heather mentioned. You can go to the next slide. And like she mentioned, this is the, the program where our partners will go to the grocery stores in the area and pick up the food that can't be sold and would otherwise go to waste. So we're, we're rescuing that food and they're able to turn around and distribute that to their neighbors in need. If you'll pull up the website. Our, our website, lowcountryfoodbank.org, has a find food section on there. And once you get set up, I'll explain it. So the find food section of our website has a map and you can, somebody can type in their address in there or just a city or a zip code, and it will pull up all the closest pantries or partner agencies that are closest to, to that address or to that city. And as you can see here, there's, the Georgetown agencies are listed there. And you can click on each one of those to find out their hours, to find out any other services that they may offer, whether it's health services or clothing programs or anything like that. All that information can be found on there as well as their contact information. Directions can be printed directly from the website there for people. And it's also translatable into other languages for those people that need that. So that's a little bit on our partner agencies.
Hi, I'm Suzie Johnson. Don't let me blow your eardrums out. I'm the Nutrition Coordinator in our Northern Region. And we're not just, I mean, obviously we feed people, but we also have a, a array of programs, government programs. They're funded by different grants that we get through the government, CACFP. And then we are also one of five SNAP Ed implementing agencies in the state of South Carolina, which means we get a portion of that state SNAP Ed funding. And we use that in our nutrition programming. And that is cooking classes. It is grocery store tours. We go to our partner agencies and we help them set up their food pantries in a way that might nudge them to pick the more nutritious food first. So we don't just do community distributions and we don't just have food pantries and give them food. We do, we're just a multifaceted organization. So some of the other programs that we have in addition to our nutrition programming, we also have kids cafe programs in most of our Title I schools in Georgetown County. We also do Fresh for Kids, which are produce distributions for the kids at those schools, farmer's market style. And then nutrition will come in and we do fun taste tests with them and cooking demonstrations with them with that produce that they pick to take home. We also do meals. We make those meals out of our Charleston office. We have a production kitchen there. So we don't, we only make kids meals. We also make meals for seniors and veterans as well. So not just getting food out, but teaching people what to do with that food, how to make nutritious meals, balance meals with that food. We do just a little bit of everything at the Low Country Food Bank. And that, that's all we've got for you. But if there are any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions from council?
Yes, I have one. With the, in the last three, four years with the price of food going up so much, has your, have you seen more of a need for what you do?
Absolutely. I, I think the reasons behind that would be the price of food, price of rent. They're speaking for what 2025 is looking like. Their Feeding America has already projected that there's going to be significant growth in food insecurity rates in all of our areas served. I can speak for Ori in particular. I know there's projected to be a 31% increase just in Ori next year. And, you know, we talk about having our pantries open different hours because we want people who are working, because there are a lot of working poor in this area, people who are working to have access to food. So we strongly encourage all of our partner agencies to have those evening hours and Saturday hours so that people can have access to food.
As you drive around the county and even the other counties, you, you see some of the churches that have the, the drive up. There's a, a organization in Hemingway called Caring and Sharing.
Yep. That's one of our partner agencies.
Okay. That's, that's what I was going to ask. I've been associated with them for over 20 years.
They are one of our partner agencies.
Mr. Carl Harmon. And he's still, he's still kicking and going strong.
Yeah. We, we, that's, I don't know about their capacity. I know that we do, we help them with their holiday meals that they do.
Very good. Thank you so much for all y'all do.
It's our pleasure.
And then you also have a, we gave you a few papers. So those are resources. Our, our list of agency partners are on those papers as well as all the programs that we offer. And there's also a QR code on that list of agency partners that will take people right to our website so they can get on that map.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had, I had a question there. What about, what about funding? How, do you all receive from churches not only, I know we collect food at our church. Do you, do you have donors also? How does that work unless I missed it?
So we get funding through individual donors, corporate donors, USDA. We have a grant writer who is very, very good at her job. So we get donations from many different sources. We, we have a development department that, you know, we're solely supported by donations and grants and government programs.
Do those, does that funding come into the state and then it's divided up between, you were saying you're in the northern portion. How does that work?
So it would depend on what type of grant it is. Sometimes a grant may be specific to areas, to LMI, low to moderate income areas. We just worked through a HUD grant that was a very large grant that was specific to LMI neighborhoods. So it, and also for private donors, they can specify what they would, where they would like their money spent. And even specifically, they can say they would like for that to be spent on produce at a specific distribution or for a specific agency.
Do you have a, an annual budget that, to give us some kind of an idea of what kind of money comes into the coffers?
So we did not bring that with us, but I would be happy to share that with you. Our, our development department does have that available.
I, I understand. I was just.
It is on the website as well. I'm sorry. It's, it's, can be located on lowcountryfoodbank.org.
Have you got a ballpark? You could tell us what it might be?
I can give you our SNAP Ed budget that we get.
Your what?
Our SNAP Ed budget. So SNAP funding, that is your, like your EBT cards that people get that they can buy groceries with that. Part of that funding goes to what's called SNAP Ed. And that's education around how they can make those SNAP Ed dollars last longer, last the whole month. And that is actually allocated from the government to each state. And then that state, the head implementing agency of that SNAP Ed funding disperses it to the implementing agencies, which we are one of those.
Which government agency is that? Is that agriculture or?
It's Department of Ag and USDA.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? We thank you all for, all that you do for our communities. Thank you all for being here also. We'll move forward with a presentation from Mr. Ackerman regarding our Capital Project Sales Tax and Local Option Sales Tax, Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to come before you one more time. I was hoping to get today because early voting started yesterday. Apparently, I heard about five percent of the folks in the county actually voted yesterday. So that's like incredible, six. RPO says six, that's unheard of. So we should have done this yesterday, I guess. Anyway, so what I wanted to talk about is the two upcoming sales tax referendums. And I say upcoming even though they started yesterday. You know, they'll be on the on the ballot that'll be final on November fifth. Those two referendums are the Local Option Sales Tax and the Capital Project Sales Tax. These would be an additional one cent sales tax on things that you buy at the store, certain things that you buy at the store. But that's the only similarity between those two items. They do two totally different things. In the state of South Carolina, there's forty-six counties, as most of you should note. Only three counties in the state don't take advantage of some form of additional one cent sales tax. We are literally surrounded by counties who do the Local Option Sales Tax and Capital Project Sales Tax. So when, when, like this weekend, I had to go to Home Depot. I went to Mount Pleasant and somebody in Charleston County thanked me for for my donation, I guess. So certain things are not taxable, as I mentioned before. The thing that most people are going to spend the bulk of their, their, the things that most people are going to spend the bulk of their money on will not be taxable. Things such as housing, groceries, gasoline at the pump, prescription medications. One that I put, didn't put on here, an item that is currently taxed is vehicles, but that is capped. So that tax can't go up. So there wouldn't be an additional one cent sales tax on vehicles. So basically, anything you don't pay sales tax on now, there will not be the additional one cent sales tax if this is implemented. For the Local Option Sales Tax, and I'm not going to go through all the details. I'm trying to do this one hour presentation in fifteen minutes. But it is, it's authorized under state law. The county council took it through the process. This is what the question will look like. And I think it's important for people to understand that it's a separate question on the ballot and it is not a partisan question. So approximately sixty-five percent of votes in Georgetown County are cast using straight party ticket. This is not a partisan question. So if you go in and hit your straight party ticket vote, submit your ballot and walk away, you will not have voted on this question or the Capital Project Sales Tax question. You have to go all the way to the end of the ballot and find that yes or no and select yes or no on this question. Now, just as this thing is authorized under state law, the distribution is authorized under state law. So we anticipate collecting approximately ten million dollars a year, a little over ten million dollars a year in the additional one cent sales tax for Local Option Sales Tax and if if passed, Capital Project Sales Tax. So ten million dollars a year on each. And we get these numbers from the South Carolina Department of Revenue. We feel like, you know, we've collected in 2023. We would have collected about ten and a quarter million. So we feel like ten million is a good safe number. So all of our figures are based on ten million dollars of collections. Now, how it works is seventy-one percent, and this is very important for people to understand, seventy-one percent of the money collected goes to directly roll your property taxes back. It's a credit against your property tax bill, whether this be a piece of vacant land, a home, a car, a boat, an airplane, your business, your business, personal property, anything you receive a tax notice on, there would be a Local Option Sales Tax credit. Now, a part of that money, seventy-one percent, goes to roll taxes back. The other twenty-nine percent goes to the county and municipalities for operational needs. But what does that look like for the individual? What kind of rollback would you expect? And I'm working on averages here. So the average household in Georgetown County, the average household income is fifty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. If you back out things that they would spend that are not taxable, such as housing, transportation, groceries, doctor's appointments, prescription medications, they're left with disposable income in an amount where you could expect the average household to pay about fifteen or fifty-eight dollars a year in additional one cent sales tax. But the Local Option Sales Tax credit would give the average household back about four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And this is using an average two hundred thousand dollar home and a vehicle, one vehicle in a, in the household. So that gives you a net credit coming back of about four hundred and eighteen dollars, almost four hundred and nineteen dollars. Now, for everybody who's doing the math, that doesn't work out. How could we possibly, each household pay fifty-eight dollars but get back four seventy-seven? The difference is from tourism mainly. We have some information from the South Carolina Department of Tourism that shows that, and we're being very conservative in our figure, that approximately forty percent of the taxes collected would come from tourists. The the sales tax or the Tourism Report shows about fifty-seven percent sales taxes collected in Georgetown County, but there's some expenditures, but there's some things that they wouldn't pay taxes on. So so we're trying to be conservative in that number. There's also taxes coming from people who are simply traveling through Georgetown. You know, they're going from Conway to Charleston. They stop in Georgetown for a Red Bull so they don't fall asleep. And and they would pay taxes on on purchases as they're coming through. There's also finished product industrial sales. You know, we have a lot of industry in Georgetown County, particularly on the western portion of the county that make finished products. So when they sell those finished products, they would collect taxes on those as well. So across the county, it would be a little bit different. The municipalities would receive a little more share. The county gets up to seventy-one percent. The county gets two-thirds and the municipalities get the other third based on population. So the average household in the town of Andrews would be looking at about a five hundred and thirty-six dollar annual credit. And the average household in the city of Georgetown, about six hundred and fifty-four dollars. In the unincorporated areas of the county and also Paulies Island, even though Paulies Island is a town, they don't issue property taxes on their residents. And y'all stop me at any time with questions. So we tried to make this a little easier for everybody. If you want to look at, I'm using averages, all my numbers use averages. If you go out on our website, gtcounty.org backslash lost, L O S T, there's a calculator. And you can go in, click on that calculator, and in that green box, you put the value of your home. There's two more tabs, one for vehicles and one for boats, and you can do the same thing there. So what you would do is look at your last tax bill. If you have it, if not, it's available online. But look at your last tax bill and find the market value of your property on that tax bill and key that number in and come down to your tax district and it'll show you what your credit would be. And all of these numbers are based on that very conservative ten million dollar figure. So if we collect more, the credit becomes more as well. And I think that's important for people to know. Now, the one big difference between Local Option Sales Tax and Capital Project Sales Tax is Local Option Sales Tax is, once it's voted in, it has to be voted out. It does not have an automatic sunset. Capital Project Sales Tax stops after eight years. Now, I've been going all over the county, I've been talking to a lot of different people, and they say, well, how do we know? They asked me the question, how do we know that Local Option Sales Tax works this way? Well, remember, we're surrounded. If we go back to the map, we're surrounded by people who have Local Option Sales Tax in place and have had it for years and years and years. Charleston County, Berkeley County, Williamsburg County, Florence County, Marion County, all these counties have Local Option Sales Tax. My understanding is Ori's going to put it on referendum for adoption in twenty-six. I tell them, call people. If you know somebody in those counties, call them. In the history of Local Option Sales Tax, I can't find an instance where anybody ever even tried to vote it out. So I I take that demeanor, once it goes in place, people typically like it. I'm gonna get back to my.
Walt, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Move on, the, stop right there, go back one. The large, there's a section of the population that you're leaving out, I think, which is a certain amount of population that does not own property.
Yes, sir.
And and some never will own property. So they'll, they always reap the benefits of the property taxes from the property owners, but they never pay into it. And this is a certain amount, and I don't know how big that population is. But that, that is a big, that's one way for them to, you know, help the poor, so to speak, property owners that's been paying the full load for years and years.
Well, I mean, even beyond that, this actually, I think it's going to help the people who don't own the property as well. Well, number one, you know, most people, most households, it's hard to survive without a car. You've got a vehicle, you're going to get some sort of credit back. But using the county as an example, we actually lease a facility. We have a landlord and we redo this lease every three years. If this is enacted, that landlord, he has to make a certain amount of profit. You you're not in business not to make money. And I know he wants to make a certain amount of profit. I'm going to pull his tax notice. And when we sit down to negotiate on my new rent, I'm going to say, you have reduced your expenses by this amount. I expect a corresponding reduction in my rent. A good landlord would take that into account. He wants to, they want to keep their profit margin, but they shouldn't do it on the backs of the renters when they're getting it from another source, is how I would look at it. So I I I think this could help everyone, regardless of whether you're a property owner or not. But that's a great, good question. And I'm sure you have one more.
Walt, I had a comment when you were talking about the market value. If you remember last night, there was some confusion about that. You might tell them that it's the market value based on what Georgetown County thinks it is.
Yes, sir. So it's not, when I say go to your tax bill and find the market value, this would not be if you just had a recent appraisal on your home. You know, maybe you've been living in your, in your house for thirty years. This is basically your taxable value on your home. So if you've been living in that house for a long time and you've hit that cap, your your real market value, your real world market value may be significantly higher than your actual taxable value, which is why it's important to use that number from from your tax notice. Yes, sir, thank you. And I, the question came last night, because I think maybe people weren't understanding it. You know, I keep using the average home, the average home value in Georgetown County is two hundred thousand. So it seemed like people thought that was the credit. You get a credit on two hundred thousand. If your house is worth four hundred thousand, you would get twice that much. If your house is worth six hundred thousand, you would get three times that much. So it's every dollar of house value increases the credit and every dollar of car value, boat value, so on, increases the credit. And I think that's important for people to know.
Mr. Chairman, will this Local Option Sales Tax have any kind of impact on homestead exemption?
No, ma'am. And that's part of the great way in which it works. So for our folks over sixty-five who have applied for homestead exemption, they get a credit equal to fifty thousand dollars worth of property value. So if your home is worth a hundred thousand dollars, you've got taxes on a hundred thousand and a credit on fifty thousand dollars worth. But your Local Option Sales Tax credit is applied to the full hundred thousand. So it's on top of your homestead exemption. Now, the only caveat, and we would have this situation, because I've looked at some properties across the county, we have properties that it would actually take their tax value or their taxable liability down to zero. Actually, by math, it would take it below zero, but we don't issue a refund. It could only take it down to zero. We don't give people money back, unfortunately. So, yes, ma'am, but that is, that is a real world possibility. There are many, many, many properties across Georgetown County in which we could find ourselves in that situation. Any other questions? And if you go on the website, right in the middle of the page, this is what our calculation link looks like. And y'all stop me, I can back up at any time. If not, I'm going to move on to Capital Project Sales Tax. So on the ballot as well is another initiative for an additional one cent sales tax referred to as Capital Project Sales Tax. Whereas Local Option Sales Tax is a credit back against individual property taxes, Capital Project Sales Tax is money used to build things, to construct things, capital items. And the easiest definition of a capital item is something you can't pick up and move out of Georgetown County. So think building pipes in the ground, things like that. You guys were all, you council members were all involved in this process. You know, you know, he had to set up a commission. The commission went out and sought projects from the public. They came back with a list of projects and that list had to comport with state law. State law now says we have to have not one but two project lists. We have to have a primary project list and a contingent project list. And the reason for that is if our estimate of ten million dollars is too low and we collect significantly more money, we have to know what the voters want to do with the extra money. And that would be items on the contingency list so that we don't find ourselves struggling like we did in in the last Capital Project Sales Tax. Legislature solved the problem. They fixed the problem by by creating that requirement for a secondary list. These projects, the commission wanted to focus on health, safety and wellness. They wanted to look at things that had the biggest impact to the community. And they wanted to structure the projects on the list in a way in which voters could see some things happen quite rapidly upfront. So there's some of the smaller projects are kind of the top of the priority list. It's a long process. It's going to take about ten years from start to finish. If we start collecting the money, we have to have money before we can do projects. And we'll collect the money right on through twenty thirty-three or twenty thirty-four, I think. So it's it's a long process. Don't expect everything to happen overnight. And I know that's, we are all in a, in an instant gratification society, but this is not one of those things that's going to work that way. What did the projects look like on the priority list? There's about forty-two million dollars worth of water and sewer projects. The biggest single project on this list is a project to put sewer in the Sampic community. That that community is thirteen, fourteen hundred houses. I think Mr. Carolina, if he was here, he could tell us probably the exact number. But there's, it's just an area that has poor soil, poor drainage. They work on septic systems and oftentimes when it rains, they can't flush their toilets in their homes. It's a top priority project, not just from the commission standpoint, but from DHEC. I think it's actually the top priority project in the state of South Carolina, but there's never been funding to do it. And this would be a way to to fund that project. There's another huge project in the water and sewers, a little bit, six million dollars or so, but it's ninety percent grant funded. So they're looking for about six hundred thousand dollars to do this project. The commission thought it was very important if we had projects that had grant funding associated to get those up to the front of the list so that we could stretch those CPST dollars. On the public safety side, the biggest single project there is a new nine-one-one center and EOC. That's about a ten million dollar project altogether. Most of y'all have dropped by the EOC and the nine-one-one center from time to time, especially during cases of emergency. And you know that that facility is about thirty years old now. It was built when Georgetown County had forty-five thousand residents. We have sixty-five thousand now. We need more nine-one-one operators, but we can't squeeze anymore in the room. It is completely full. There's absolutely no way to put another nine-one-one operator in that room. We have to do something, we have to build another facility. Likewise, with the EOC, they join each other and the facility is actually built in the flood zone. So last December, when we had a big rain, the water was about two and a half feet deep in the parking lot. We couldn't get anybody in and out of the building without life vests and waders. So it's not the ideal location. We need to do something. There's a couple of fire stations on there and public safety. Stormwater is a big project there. It's about five million dollars in the Paulies Island area for the Parkersville community, running down MLK. That's a pretty massive, well-needed project. On the transportation side, there are actually two projects there. One is a road widening project. It's a six and a half million dollar project. And the city's looking for a million dollars to complete that project. It's five point five million dollar grant funded through DOT. And they want, they need a million dollars to help relocate some utilities. The other transportation project is actually a bus terminal for, in, somewhere in the city of Georgetown through Walkmore Regional Transit Authority. That's another huge grant project. They're looking for six, seven hundred thousand dollars to do a three million dollar project. And those grants are in hand. So that's a good way to stretch those dollars. There's three recreation projects all across the county and some public services facilities. One at our landfill that would just be like an equipment servicing facility for the large equipment at the landfill, which ultimately saves us some dollars in O and M costs and time. So I mentioned it before, these projects will be pay-as-you-go. So we have to receive the money before we can do the projects. There is a caveat that allows, in the question, that would allow county council to issue bonds to pay for these projects. Now, why would we want to issue bonds to pay for projects? Remember this long term, and I think I just clicked one too many times. So if we're working over ten years to do projects, we have to consider inflation. Construction inflation runs about five percent a year. But with the county's triple A credit rating, the, not triple A, I'm sorry, double A minus credit rating, I wish we had a triple A, we can do short-term borrowing like that. I wish we had a triple-A, we can do short-term borrowing like this for about three percent. So we beat that five percent inflation, which stretches these dollars out, allows us to get further down into the contingency list. Now, there's, in the ordinance, we put a requirement to, to endo, into a funding agreement with the agencies that will be doing these projects. Only about twenty-three million out of the seventy-three million dollars in primary projects are county projects. So if we were looking at bonds, you wouldn't be doing bonds for the entire process. Each other entity would need to do their own bonds if they so chose to do that way, but some may just do pay-as-you-go funding. But with these other entities, we have to make sure that all the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed. The Department of Revenue now, through a change in state law, is gonna come in and actually audit each one of these projects. And if you don't do everything right, if the project is not, not done as the voters voted on and as it was submitted, the county would have to refund that money, and we don't wanna do that. Some counties have had to do that, and that's a, that's a bad day when you have to go to county council and say, "Hey, we need to check ten million dollars right in the DOR."
Walt, Walt, would the other entities be the three municipalities?
Um, it, those and Georgetown County Water and Sewer, Brown's Ferry Water, and rural, um, rural water potentially, because they have items on the contingency list and Waukamaw Regional Transit Authority. So the other governmental entities, yes. The county wouldn't sign its own funding agreement, cuz we're the ones that are, are checking everything. Or, I say "we" loosely, but it would be our finance department. So, I just clicked, there we go. So you remember the local option sales tax question? It filled up most of a page. This is just the preamble to the capital project sales tax question. And this is why it's so important for everybody to understand, they're gonna have to go through the tedious process of scrolling all the way through, because this question, we have to list each project and the dollar amount and a description of the project by law. So it goes on and on and on and on and on until we get down to the part about bonding, and you finally see one spot to vote yes or no. It may be a couple different pages on the, on the voting machine question, but there's only gonna be one spot for yes or no where people can actually cast their vote. But just briefly, if you go back up and look, if you look at item number two, city of Georgetown, one million forty thousand dollars, as grant match funding, and you'll see that throughout these, throughout these items, particularly on the, on the priority list, if it says as grant match funding, that is a grant in hand, and this will be matching. And when you get down to the contingency list, the first item is the biggest project of all that was submitted. It's a thirty-six million dollar dredging project for Merle's Inlet, and we need a million dollars to match that grant. We've got about fifteen million in hand so far, and the rest is coming. I think they're actually doing the main channel now, and the rest of the grant money will do the side channels. So odds are, better than not, that we will get down into the contingency projects and get to this one. But since that grant was not in hand, the commission felt they couldn't put it on the priority list, because by law, we would have to fully fund it. Now, that's about it in a nutshell. Um, I, I do wanna say this, I'm, one more thing. You know, I mentioned that the Sampit project was the most priority, a highest priority project from a commission standpoint and from DHEC, but it's actually number nine down on the priority project list. And the reason being, according to Georgetown County Water and Sewer, sewer projects are so complex with the permitting, the engineering, and all this stuff it takes. Takes about eighteen months just to get one off the ground before you can ever start digging dirt. So the commission didn't wanna put it first on the list, and then we have an eighteen-month lag before we can actually do any other projects. They put about eight million dollars worth of smaller projects up front. We should be able to collect enough money within the first year of collections and start on most or all of these projects and get them completed before we actually even start on project number nine. That was the, the rationale behind that. Any questions?
Walt, I've got a comment.
Yes, sir.
I just thought about this. You know, we're looking, we're, we're taking care of our business as far as the county projects, Georgetown Water and Sewer and the rest of them. Uh, have, did you all discuss maybe requiring performance bonds from each of those entities so that if they did not perform properly, we wouldn't have to dip into our own bucket to take care of somebody else's problem?
So they have to follow either our procurement policy or the procurement policy of their own, whichever is the more restrictive. And our procurement policy requires performance bonds on projects such as this, so they should automatically be in it.
Thank you. That's, that's a-
Yes, a good, great point.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a lot, way too much money to play around with.
Right. Thank you.
Walt, on some of these projects require permitting, are the entities gonna go ahead and start the permit process even though it's further down, like Sampit? Are they gonna start that process so once we get down to where the money is, it shortens the time that-
So, so good question. If it's actually, if it passes November fifth, they will know the money's coming. I don't know the financial position of Georgetown County Water and Sewer enough, uh, uh, enough to answer whether they have fund balance enough to start the process. In order to, to just submit for a permit, you have to have final and complete engineered drawings, which on a project such as that, uh, and it's in the packet, I, and I just can't remember it off the top of my head, but it's probably half a million dollars or more just of engineering work that you would have to do before you would have sufficient drawings and designs to submit for the project. So I don't know how deep their, their fund balance goes and whether they could come up with that. I mean, they would know when they're gonna get the money, but I don't know if they have the, the means to do it. They, they may very well. I just don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
So Walt, just to be clear, forty to fifty cents of every dollar is coming from either tourism, manufactured finished goods, and what was the other-
Closer to eighty percent altogether. Um, if, if you look at the math and, and a wise man who's in this room, and I won't call him out, sent me a report yesterday that showed the average taxable good expenditure for a household in the state of South Carolina, it wasn't broken down by county, is twenty-four percent. So they spend twenty-four percent of their household income on taxable goods, uh, in South Carolina. Now, that, that's for all counties, so ours may be a little higher, may be a little lower, um, depending. But, but I would estimate somewhere, so let's just call it seventy-five percent for good measure, is coming from folks who do not live in Georgetown County. Now, the other thing I didn't mention is we have a considerable number of folks who live in other counties and come into Georgetown County every day, either to work, to go to Walmart. You know, if you live a mile outside of Andrews across county line and you need to go to Walmart, you're not going forty-five minutes to Lake City. You're coming to Georgetown County to, right here to Georgetown City. So there's a lot of that kind of activity that goes on as well. So it's not necessarily just the money from the tourist, which is tracked very well. It's the folks who don't live in our county and come in and shop and dine and things like that. Um, and I do the same thing. You know, I, I, I'm doing a house project. I needed to go to Home Depot. We don't have one in Georgetown County. I went to Mount Pleasant Sunday afternoon and threw five dollars in their jar, so, um, it happens every day.
So you're saying seventy-five cents of every dollar comes from somewhere else, but we're getting a hundred percent return?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm, yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Just wanna make sure.
Walt, real quick, and this may be covered before, but like, online purchases that are sent to houses, are those covered? Do they, do they-
Yes, they are. So when, the hard part about that is there's some, there's some undefined out-of-state purchases, and I got it on the report from DOR that's not included in that ten million dollar number that I showed. But if somebody's putting, if they put their correct address down, you know, so shipped to their house, then Amazon knows exactly the location, so they know the county, and they have to, by law now, collect that sales tax.
And that sales tax comes to us?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
But it could be a situation where it's some weird P O box or, you know, they're, they're shipping it to their granddaughter in Arizona, so, you know, it's not gonna be a hundred percent accurate. Thank y'all. Great questions.
Any additional questions from council or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. I guess the information that Mr. Ackerman provided was just for information purposes, wasn't it? I see we have down here a call for motion in a second, but that's just for informational purposes. Let's move on down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to thirty minutes. Each, each speaker's will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield, gives her a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that we have a timer on our screen, on our, yeah, on our screen, which will let you know what your remaining time is. We ask you to conclude your comments when that timer goes off, conclude your comments promptly. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comments this evening?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we do have eleven speakers signed up this evening. And as you stated, each will have up to three minutes, and our first speaker is Justin Cole.
Thank you, Chairman, County Council. Uh, I'm here to speak on behalf of the rezoning of a parcel of land at seventy-nine fourteen Brown's Ferry Road. Uh, presently, it is zoned as VR ten, uh, two point nine two acres. Thomas Marine Service wanted to put a small, uh, family-owned marine sales and service business there. It would not be intrusive to the, to the community, uh, and it's a lot less intrusive than some of the things that are already available uh, to use that land for under the VR ten, uh, such as four mobile homes per acre. You can put eleven mobile homes on it, uh, and it is available for retail for hardware, feedings, seating, such as that. And the intent, under, uh, both the VR ten and the G C portion uh, of the articles of the community, is, uh, under the VR ten is, uh, "To encourage local and neighborhood businesses, uh, so as to provide nearby residential areas with convenient service and small retail facilities." On the G C side, it says, same thing here, it says, "Designed to encourage the formation and continuance of a compatible and economically healthy environment for business, financial service, and so forth." I attended a, uh, a meet and greet that Thomas Marine Service, uh, held this past Saturday. They had a wonderful PowerPoint I wish to depend up here today, uh, but, uh, it was, uh, had numerous members of the community, and I didn't speak to one person there that was against this. They were all, uh, very pleased that Mr. Thomas and his family, young business people, were, uh, open to putting the investment into this piece of property that's been sitting vacant for years, and, uh, they all felt like it'd be a tremendous asset to the community. Uh, I don't know whether any of those folks are here today. I think they've, uh, sent some emails, they've sent some letters, I think they've made some phone calls. But, uh, you know, I, I know these folks very well, and, uh, I think that they would be a tremendous asset to the Brown's Ferry community, uh, longtime residents of Georgetown County such as, as myself. So, uh, thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration.
Kennedy Johnson.
Good afternoon, Chairman Morant, Vice Chairman Johnson, to other county council board members. Again, my name is Kennedy Johnson. Just wanna say the Brown's Ferry community, we're totally, totally against the rezoning of this property. Members, would you please stand? Thank you. We're asking county council to accept the recommendation from the plan of commissioning. Mission was to, um, deny, deny rezoning request for Mr. Thomas from VR ten to general commercial. Again, we don't want this business there. We feel like it's not appropriate for our community. If county council changes this property to general commercial, you know, it's over for county council, you go on to your next business of, of agenda. But for us that lives in that community, this would be a life-changing experience for us. Um, in the next five years, we have no say-so in what business come to our village. The best thing about not having to explain what the VR ten or general commercial is to you guys, you know what it is, so we don't have to go through that. As we met the other day, we were just talking about situations, and I guess one of the questions came up, especially after county council had not made a decision yet on the property. Um, your work is still being done in the building. There are large, um, um, boxes, um, on the other side of the building. Material is stored in the back. And last Saturday, we noticed that there was a sign up front, which they had a meet and greet dinner, extending our business to this side of the community. I think you might have a flyer on that. I guess the question was, um, are extending our business to the community? That puzzled me, because I don't know, someone knows something that the community doesn't know yet that's been passed already. I'm sure it has not. As I drove past the building, I noticed Saturday that, I said, "Wow, the community's not really supporting this," because there wasn't anybody there, not too many people at all. I'm reminded, uh, as a conclusion, I'm reminded, um, every day I cross this bridge on five hundred fifty-one, which is two-tenth of a mile from where the business gonna be, I'm reminded every single day on that curve on that bridge, where there's an accident that killed three people. Truck, uh, a transit bus, as well as that, um, SUV. I'm reminded every day how dangerous that road is right there. I'm concerned, because at the street on Arena Drive, the school bus stops right there, at that business. I'm concerned with trucks and everything else coming out, especially when our precious kids is on that school bus. Again, I'm asking you to deny this request, and thank you.
Andy Roberts.
Good evening. I'm Andy Roberts. I'm a forty-three-year resident of the Brown's Ferry community. And personally, I welcome Lee Thomas and Mr. Thomas Marine into community. I think it's great for him to use an existing vacant building and repurpose it for his own business, and that one that'll benefit the community. It's an existing building there. I don't see anything that's really gonna impact it in, in the community. And the benefits of it is not only does it serve the people in the community, but counties-wide. I live on the river there, and I can't tell you the times. Every weekend, there's boats broken down or boat trailers behind the cars that wheel bearings or flat tires and, I mean, it's probably five, probably fifty cars at minimum on a Saturday or a Sunday at Brown's Ferry Boat Row that could greatly benefit with this Thomas Marine being located there. So as far as I'm concerned, it would be a great asset to the community and surrounding communities. Thank you.
Silas Coens.
Good afternoon. My property, uh, busts right up to, uh, the Thomas's property. And, uh, like, uh, Johnson said, you know, there's a whole lot of traffic, you know, buses and stuff stepping in that way. And also, when it rains, I got a pond in my back. And all of that water come from his side onto my side, and once that get full, it goes in for about sixty feet from my house and, and also make another pond, and that sits there for like two months before it dry up. And I'm just, you know, wanted to say, uh, you know, commercial, I hope you let the residents stay just like I do this. Thank you.
Janie Jones.
Good evening. My name is Janie Jones, and I live at seventy-nine forty-five Brown's Ferry Road in front of the Thomas's property. I understand that on Saturday, the Thomas's had a meet and greet for the community. I was at home in the afternoon and in the evening, and I didn't witness any gathering at the Thomas's. That led me to believe that the community opposed Mr. Thomas moving into our village, and therefore stands with us. As we stated in the beginning- As we stated in the beginning, we oppose having our village rezoned to general commercial. We feel that if the village is rezoned, it won't take long before recreation, entertainment of all forms sweep in, and our peaceful village will cease to exist. Mr. Thomas' property is surrounded by commercial homes, include retired people directly next door to him. We feel that the zone change would impact their relaxation as they would be disturbed by more lawnmowers, large equipments, boat motors, and more traffic in front of their homes. Before I moved back home in 2020, I looked up the rezoning area purpose and in Georgetown, South Carolina, I saw VR10, and I got very happy because that was exactly where I was moving back home to. VR10 reads, "It is the intent of this district to provide areas for single-family resident development, low to moderate density, and to encourage local or neighborhood businesses as so as to provide nearby residential areas with convenient service and small retail facilities." The regulation which applied within the district are designed to reduce traffic congestion, avoid the development of strip businesses district, and to disencourage industrial and other development capable of adversary affecting the localized residential character of the village. We ask that you deny Mr. Thomas's request and leave our village as is. Thank you.
Lee Thomas.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm the owner, Thomas Marine. My wife and myself and my kids have invested in buying this piece of property to move our business to that location. Small business. Just like it says in VR10, dedicated for small businesses. Well, we're a small business. We don't intend to build big structures, build storage units. We bought it to use the existing building as it is. We did install a fence around it per our insurance regulations and request. We don't intend to do anything else but utilize the property of what it is. Majority of my business is service calls to individuals' houses where their boats can be looked at on the water, but cannot be trailered by a trailer or land. They're too big. Sport fishers, 30-foot, 40-foot boats, twins, triples, quads on the back, diesel engines. So, to give you some examples, we do have smaller vessels, John boats, high tides, sportsmans that do come in and out. We change the oil. We service them, and we get them ready for the road so there's no accidents. Now, our business will take, will impede very, very little, if not any, on the infrastructure that's there. Now, we did have a meet and greet at the office. We met with quite a few people. And actually, one of them, his name was Israel Johnson. You know, we stopped, and we talked about the Lord Jesus Christ for a long time. We talked to Mr. Holmes about his business and what he does, and he is more than happy to have something local there. In fact, he wants us to carry chicken food to feed his chickens. We talked to Arthur Gathers, and we must have talked for two hours. We talked any and everything. In fact, I got a phone call before coming here, and we prayed together on that this rezoning would take effect. Now, he lives right down the road. And we also talked to his brother Jerry that was with him. Unfortunately, they can't make it due to work. Some can't make it because of work. But some of their concerns was security lighting. Security lighting, there's poles there that have lighting on it, they're not hooked up. We don't want to, we don't want to pay the light bill on those and disturb anybody. There's also other concerns, but we ask you to rezone this so we can continue our business.
Pat Cook.
Hi. My name is Pat Cook, and I am here on behalf of my neighbors, Lee and Courtney Thomas. My husband Jerry would have been here as well had it not been for a prior commitment. The Thomases purchased the house next door to us in the Benham, Benham community five years ago. We live in a quiet, close-knit community, and I can honestly say that Lee's day-to-day activities with his business have in no way been a problem to us, and we're right next door. Me, we, as well as some of our friends and family members, use Lee's services regularly for our boarding needs. Jerry and I, my husband, are lifelong residents of Georgetown County, and we also own property in the Brown's Ferry community. We believe that the Thomases would be an asset to the community. I can see no reason why the Thomases should not be allowed to continue on with their plans for the property they purchased and put so much money into. Jerry and I believe that this small business would greatly benefit the many voters and fishermen in the area. They, the Thomases are good people and would be excellent neighbors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Michael Chastey.
Hello, everyone. My name's Michael Chastey. I'm here for Mr. Thomas. I just met him a couple of weeks ago by word of mouth. I had an old boat in my house that was broke down. I wasn't able to have it put on a trailer and be fixed. I found out through word of mouth, he, when I called him, talked to him at home, he come to my house, told me what was wrong with it, come back two days later, fixed it. Now, I'm not able to bend down and do what he done. I don't know of any boat dealer that'll send a mechanic to your house, talk with you just as nice as he was, just as honest as he could be. Price-wise, look here, go to a dealer and see what they charge. Mr. Thomas was real fair about it. I'm real pleased. I wished he was living beside my house, and I had property for him to do that. I'd honor him. We need, they don't make property. So places of business has got to be going somewhere. Well, I vote to go and let him because word of mouth means a lot and time a tale. If the man was just as good to me as he will be to everybody else, he will be good to the community. You've just got to give him a chance. You can't jump to the conclusions of anything. So, I vote to let him in. Thank you.
Warren Hardy.
Good evening, Council. I've been a property owner in Georgetown County for about 14 years, and Mr. Thomas was one of the first residents here I became affiliated with and got to know. And I can assure you, he's a professional, highly regarded in his business, very knowledgeable. And not only that, he's a good family man, and I believe he'd be a strong asset for the community if the community just gave him a chance. He'll be a benefit to the community in the long run, and he'll invest in it, and he'll make it and improve that property and be a valuable asset to the citizens there. Thank you.
Ellis Jones.
Good evening. My name is Ellis Jones, and I'm here to represent the McClary Subdivision Community off of Brick Chimney Road. Mr. Danny Venders was here at the last meeting, but he had a family emergency, so he couldn't make it, and he asked me to attend for him. At the last meeting, it was mentioned that the area that is supplied to be rezoned for an industrial park, that there was going to be a railroad platform installed there. So there was some concern by the community what that would entail and what would be stored there, such as containers or whatever. We have a quiet community, and we are concerned that that type of rezoning would cause all kind of traffic and cause some confusion for that area. Brick Chimney Road right now, with the pavement all the way through to Black River Road, has increased quite a bit, and we're concerned that if that area is rezoned, it would even make it worse. When people built their homes in that area, we built those homes outside the city limits, and we built them wanting to be in a rural area, not in the city limits. And there's also some concern that if that's rezoned and we start getting industry out there, then at a later date, the city limits may come out beyond that area. So that's also a concern. So I'm here to say that we're against the rezoning of that area to limited industrial. Thank you.
Carolyn Cribb.
Thank you. I've been living on my property on Brick Chimney Road since 1969. My husband and I built our home there, and we raised our family in the quiet, safe, friendly neighborhood there. I still live there as he passed away a few years ago. I like to be outside. I like to work in my yard. I like to keep my flowers nice. I like to keep my shrubbery trimmed. I like a nice, neat yard. It's a good exercise for me as well. I like to have my kids and grandkids over to grill out, and when the weather is nice, we like to eat out there. I feel like this rezoning would negatively impact me by diminishing the pleasure and benefit that I get from using my property as I do now. I feel it would also decrease the value of my property as well as the neighbors' properties. Potential buyers are not interested in, or attracted to properties with industry such as these that are on the list that would be approved or businesses nearby. If rezoned, as Ellis said, we would have more traffic. Right now, as I try to get out of my road, out of my driveway on Brick, onto Brick Chimney Road, I no longer back out, it's too dangerous. I turn around and I drive out. We would have more noise. There's possible air pollution, depending on what kind of businesses would come in. There could potentially be more crime. Adult businesses, that sort of thing, attract crime. Another thing that hadn't really been brought up, but I thought about it, was not only are we impacted, but if the forest is clear-cut and the land cleared, the wildlife would be run out into the road, and that could potentially cause accidents, or the wildlife could be I know of neighborhoods right now, my sister lives over in Murrah, Denver, they have animals come through their yard. They're one block off of 17A. And I know that there are coyotes problems around in different areas of the county, and in some cases, there's bears. They don't have anywhere to go because the land has been taken up. Their homes have been destroyed. Right now, as far as businesses in Georgetown County, I see often that we have established businesses and industries that are advertising. They want workers to come in, so there's jobs available for people if they want to work. And also, there are empty buildings all around that could be used for new businesses. And for these reasons, I and many others ask that you deny this request for rezoning. Thank you.
That's our final speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank you all for all of your comments. Please note that, Council, we'll be taking those comments into consideration when we are deliberating and making decisions. Let's move on down on our agenda. Please note that there are two matters on our consent agenda which were previously approved by the Agenda Approval Process. Procurement number 24-085 and procurement number 22-030. We move down to our resolutions and proclamations. Please note that, Council, we'll be making a decision regarding the Brown's Ferry property later on within our meeting, so you're leaving now, but the decision has not been made yet, so just be aware of that. We're moving down to our resolutions and proclamations. Proclamation number 24-36, proclaiming November as Native American Heritage Month in Georgetown County. Ms. Sierra. Madam Clerk. Yeah, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on this evening's agenda is consideration of a proclamation to declare November as Native American Heritage Month. And this evening, we are pleased to have Acting Chief Cheryl Cale with us in this evening's meeting, and she would like to make a few comments regarding Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you.
Good evening, County Council and Chairman Morant. My name is Cheryl Cale, as I was introduced. And I'd just like to say that this proclamation is something that has been occurring for 30-plus years in numerous places throughout the United States. The significance to having this proclamation made in Georgetown County is the connection, particularly for the Wacoma, to this area going back as early as 500 years ago, when when Dealian, who was a Spanish judge, came from Santo Domingo with Gordelia and landed on what is believed to be Winia Bay as he was exploring the coast and trying to establish settlement. At that point, he had a slaver that was with him, Gekos, who captured what was believed to be about 100 Wacoma Indians. They were taken back to Santo Domingo and enslaved. So this actually started this process of enslavement. Not necessarily a great history to reference for Georgetown County, but fortunately, the settlement failed. It was much later on, as Francisco de Jacora, who left, came back and returned to the area of his homeland, which again is Georgetown County. This heritage and what existed between that time and the time of early colonization, the relationship with the natives in the area was one of trade. And if you look at historical records, you see the accounts of deer skin, the trade for that, the sustenance that was provided, and what was helpful to the settlers was through the relationship that was developed with the indigenous population and the people in the area. So as I'm looking at what we're doing today, we're memorializing what had occurred over 300 years ago, and that relationship that continued on for quite some time. So I'd like to thank each and every one of you in advance for consideration of this proclamation. I hope- I hope that you will vote yes on this, and I certainly hope that you will continue in building a relationship with the indigenous people in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you be reading the proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add that Native Americans have played an integral role in shaping the history of our nation, and it's essential to educate ourselves and the future generations of Georgetown County about the significance of Native American history and culture. Specifically, we would like to thank the Wacoma Indian people by honoring their continuous contributions to art, education, governance, and the environment by proclaiming November as Native American Month. And if council so chooses to adopt this proclamation, we would ask that you would take a picture with the acting chief.
Maybe we need to just go ahead and read the proclamation, really. I can just go ahead and read it. It's kind of brief. Yes, proclamation number 24-36, proclaiming November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in Georgetown County. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is celebrated in November to recognize the enduring cultures, traditions, and histories of Native American peoples, and whereas the Wacoma Indian people made history on February 17, 2005, becoming the first of two state-recognized tribes in the history of the state of South Carolina to obtain official recognition from the Southland Commission for Minority Affairs through the establishment of the Governor's Native American Affairs Ad Hoc Committee, and whereas Native Americans have played an integral role in shaping the history of our nation, contributing to the richness of our local culture and the fabric of our society, and whereas we acknowledge the men's struggles faced by the Native American communities, including the loss of land, culture, and sovereignty, and we commit to promoting understanding, respect, and equity. And whereas it is essential to educate ourselves and future generations about the significance of Native American history and culture, and whereas we celebrate the resilience and strength of Native American people, honoring their continuous contributions to art, education, governance, and the environment, and now therefore, the Georgetown County Council does hereby proclaim November as Native American Heritage Month in Georgetown County. We encourage all residents to learn about, honor, and celebrate the diverse cultures of Native Americans and to support efforts towards reconciliation and empowerment of Native communities. So shall it be the 22nd day of October 2024? You've heard the proclamation. Is there a motion pertaining to it?
We'll move.
Is moved by Counselor Johnson for adoption of the proclamations. There a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Proclamation's been approved. We go down to resolution number 24-37 to redesignate the use of American Rescue Act funding for designated ARPA projects. Madam Administrator?
Good evening. Before you is the reallocation of $978,250 of ARPA funding to meet the December 31st, 2024 federal deadline. We are purchasing equipment, digitizing records in the Register of Deeds office, completing water projects, and increasing fire protection in the PD area, and completing home repairs by habitat. All these project expenditures will meet the requirements of ARPA, and we will be in compliance.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Any questions for Madam Administrator and Council? Hearing then, is there a motion pertaining to resolution number 24-37?
I move.
Moved by Counselor McCardo for approval, adoption is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. We'll move on down to our second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-51, rezoning one parcel totaling approximately 2.92 acres located at 7914 Brownsperry Road identified as TMS number 02-045-022-06-00 from Village 10,000 square feet residential to general commercial. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this parcel is located on the north side of Brownsperry Road, and it's between Lorena and Rosa Susan Drives. The parcel is mostly cleared and is vacant. There is a small commercial structure located on the site, and as Mr. Thompson said, the property has been recently fenced. He has, the applicant has purchased the property and is proposing a rezoning to general commercial, and the request is in order to allow for a boat sales service and storage facility called Thomas Marine. VR10, which is the current zoning, does allow for retail stores and some limited commercial businesses like barber shops, laundromats, daycares, public buildings, timber production, and some restaurants, although not drive-through restaurants. But marine-related uses are not listed in VR10, hence the rezoning request from Mr. Thomas. The parcel is pretty significant in size at 2.9 acres. We don't feel that this would be considered spot zoning based on the size of the tract. There is, as we have said, a small commercial building with a parking lot and plenty of open space available to develop the new commercial business. Any new structures will have to meet the current general commercial setback, of course. There are water and sewer available to the property. Brownsperry Water serves the site, and of course Georgetown County Sewer, Georgetown County Water and Sewer provides the sewer for the property. The surrounding tracts are all zoned either VR10 or FA. And there is some neighborhood commercial zoning nearby on Brownsperry to the southeast. There's also some general commercial zoning located there, and that, of course, will be at the intersection of Johnson and Dunbar near the elementary school. Most of the surrounding uses are rural, single-family residential. Our new future land use map shows this property to be rural village or RV, and the RV designation includes local serving businesses, institutional or community uses, and other uses that are in support of rural activities. Staff has determined that an amendment to the future land use map would not be necessary to facilitate this request. Since the property is adjacent to some existing residential uses, they would need to install a level-three buffer where there are existing homes to separate the commercial from those existing homes. We did also note that Highway 51 is a major road in that section of the county. There is, of course, an existing gas station and a retail store located about a third of a mile down Brownsperry Road. The future land use map designates that particular area as village center. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this request back in September. A representative of the neighboring community did speak at that meeting. Their concerns at that time were boat traffic, and they also expressed a desire to maintain the VR10 zoning for this property. And the commission subsequently voted four to one to recommend denial for the rezoning request. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about the chart.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from council for Ms. Richardson?
A question about it allows for retail, VR10 does, but this, it doesn't allow to sell a boat? That doesn't count as...
Right. It's pretty specific in VR10 what's allowed, and VR10 we created basically was a new district that we developed when we zoned the western part of the county. This area would not have been zoned originally, so we created the VR10 district to take, to address a lot of the villages like Jackson Village, Annie Village, this area, but we gave them some commercial uses because they are located rurally, and we wanted to allow for the small barber shop, beauty shop, to support those residential uses, so they wouldn't necessarily have to come all the way into town for those neighborhood-type uses, but it's pretty limited in terms of what's allowed commercially.
What are the things would be allowed in GC if anything happened to that business?
A gas station, a restaurant with a drive-through, a larger-type restaurant, a car repair facility, outside storage, although it does have to be fenced in, storage facilities, mini-storage-type uses, any retail, of course, pretty much what you would see up and down Highway 17, for example. General Commercial is basically our highway commercial designation.
Any other questions from council for Ms. Richardson?
Holly, what are timber business? What kind of, what kind of business could go there in the timber industry?
In VR10?
Yes, the current zoning.
I think a timber office, an office for the timber industry would obviously be allowed. Timbering is pretty much allowed in any district in that area.
I mean, could it be truck trailer repair or?
If it wasn't, if it was an accessory use to a timber business, yeah. If the timber office, you know, their office was located there, then if that was accessory, potentially, yes. I don't think they could do wood chipping and that sort of stuff there, because that would be more of an FA use.
But maintenance definitely would be included in the timber.
I would, I would approve that as an accessory, yes, to the business itself.
How far are the other GC east of there? I couldn't really tell on the map.
The general commercial zoning is located to the southeast about 2,000 feet.
2,000 feet. How many, how many businesses are at that intersection?
There's one that may be closed right at the corner. I do know there's the gas station there. The school is there. I'm trying to think what's on that other corner. I don't know if there's a business there or not. Let me look there. Of course, the Dollar General and stuff is...
A little further on.
A little further away. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, the businesses you're speaking of, they're located at the intersection of Dunbar Road and Johnson Road, is that correct?
Yes.
And in that particular area, there's a park down that area also. I think it's Lance Creek Park is down that area also? Okay, so that's a little further away from the property we are talking about today. Okay. You know, with the VR10 district, that district was, was established basically to allow some type of businesses on it which would be ancillary to the, to the homes within that particular community, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what we are talking about today is having a boat storage and repair shop, and once the, and follow up with Counselor McCardo, once the land has been rezoned, then really anything else commercially can go on that particular property. It doesn't necessarily have to be a boat business per se. It can be anything commercially.
You're exactly right. This is a straight rezoning. This isn't a planned development. It isn't a flexible design district. So what he is asking for is general commercial zoning, so the restrictions at that point would be what's allowed in GC, the GC setbacks, the buffers that are required, but anything, you know, allowed in that district would be permitted by the zoning department.
And do we have commercialism with our future land use map in that particular area?
The future land use map shows it as rural village, which does allow for some local serving businesses, institutional businesses, and other community uses. It does have language there supportive of rural activities, you know, further, that area is pretty close to the river, as a lot of people said, so we felt like that that general designation in the future land use map supported the request in the sense that in that community, that, that would be a related use.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-53?
Fifty, fifty-one.
I'm sorry.
Fifty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the wrong one. Fifty-one, I'm going too quickly there. I'm sorry. It's ordinance number 24-51. I'm sorry. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-51?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 24-51.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Counselor Newton and a second from Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Do a count. We are counting the, we have two in favor, and I'm calling for the opposed.
Four in favor.
Four in favor. Okay, I didn't see the count. Let's go. Okay, let's do it over. Two against.
You and Counselor McCardo, Counselor McCardo.
Okay. The ordinance number 24-51, we have four in favor of approval and two opposed. That's what we're saying, right? Okay, because I didn't see the count, basically. Okay. So the, the motion for ordinance number 24-51 has been approved. Let's go on down to ordinance number 24-53, right? That's where we are?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Rezoned one parcel totaling approximately 232.7 acres located on the northern side of Pennyroy Road identified as TMS number 01-0437-011-00-00 from the Turkey Creek Resort Plan Development to Forest Agricultural. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. This parcel is, as you said, located on the north side of Pennyroy Road. It's across the street from CNT Cooper's Generating Station in Georgetown. This parcel is mostly vacant or wooded land. There is a house with a dock located on the property today. This land is under a conservation easement that's held by the North American Land Trust, and that documentation has been included in your packet. A little bit of history for this tract, this is sort of an interesting rezoning and not typical of what we normally have. In 2007, council approved a rezoning for this tract to a planned development. At that time, it was called the River House Plan Development, and it included 356 single-family lots. They ranged in sizes from 7,000 to 9,000. It was basically a suburban-type development at that location. That plan was approved but never built. Some of the infrastructure was started for the first phase, but the project did not move forward. 10 years later, in 2017, a new developer came and asked to amend the PD to the Turkey Creek, Turkey Creek Resort PD. That PD was approved with a total of 533 units, and it had single-family, some multifamily, some RV spaces, and some townhomes and condos. Later, that very same year, in September, the property owner put the property under a conservation easement by the North American Land Trust. And again, we have that documentation in your packet. In 2022, that group, the LLC, sold the property to the current owner, who is Mr. David Hoffman. He has built his home there with an accessory structure for property maintenance. He intends to keep the property in its natural state for him and his family to enjoy. Again, he... Again, he is bound by the conservation easement, which restricts the development on the property. Now, this site does have both jurisdictional and non-jurisdictional wetlands. There is a wetland buffer that's included as part of the easement as well. The tracts to the north and the west are zoned FA. The surrounding uses are mostly rural, single-family residential. There is also a cemetery and a nursery nearby and of course, the industrial that's across the street. Our future land use map shows this track as residential and the proposed zoning to FA, which is what staff is proposing for this development, would have the intent to limit any further development on the track, which is compatible with the new future land use map designation of residential. At this point, the planned development that was approved, the resort park, is not going to come to fruition. It can't come to fruition based on the conservation easement restriction. After meeting with the property owner and talking to him still, staff felt it would be prudent to go ahead and downs on this property to FA, which is more in alignment with the restrictions of the easement. The Planning Commission held a public hearing. There was no one to speak at the hearing and they recommended unanimously approval for the rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from Ms. Richardson from Council?
I just want to be clear. The conservation easement is still there.
I'm sorry?
The conservation easement is still there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And with that easement, they cannot build on that. They can't do a PD on that with a conservation easement, correct?
No, it may allow for some, like homes for his children on the site. You know, it's almost 300 acres, but it wouldn't allow for a development as was approved previously. And the FA zoning, you know, of course, does allow for one-acre lots. But I think in this case, the conservation easement would be much more restrictive than that.
Thank you.
Conservation easement is on the 232 acres?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from Ms. Richardson? Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-53?
It's not moved.
It's moved by Council Elliot for approval of ordinance number 24-53. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council McCardo. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 24-54. We just had a report from our attorney, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we're actually recommending that this be withdrawn from the agenda for the reasons being, this is a very old lease. There's a long history of this property going back to the 1940s. It needs to be updated and consistent with other agreements like this that we have in the county. We'll be converting the lease to a license agreement. So recommendation is to withdraw it from the agenda and we'll, I'll be working on getting the license in place with the current occupant.
Thank you, Attorney Watson. Is there a motion for approval of withdrawing this particular ordinance from our agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Council Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Johnson. Any discussion?
Jay, can they continue to use this facility?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We will move on down to our first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-55, an ordinance to authorize renewal of a property lease agreement between Georgetown County, South Carolina and the South Carolina Education and Television Commission. Please note that the first reading of ordinance will be read into the record by cuddled only. And we will move down to our report to council, the appeal of the fire impact fees. Ms. Madam Administrator.
Yes. Staff has received an appeal on behalf of Solo Projects Lampard 1 and 2 for the fire impact fees. Due to the specialized nature of this project and the equipment that will be needed on site, staff has concurred with this appeal and are recommending that we accept the $1,008,022, which represents half the amount that would normally be for a regular construction project. This particular project, we believe that there is quite a bit of specialized equipment the county needs to purchase to be able to service this site. We have worked with the fire department and emergency management and looked at approximately $775,000 worth of equipment. The remaining amount would be available for further development of capital, equipment and facilities as outlined in the old ordinance that we have from 1997. We ask staff to accept our recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Any questions for Madam Administrator from Council? And is, is there a motion pertaining to the appeal of the fire impact fees as presented by the administrator?
So moved.
This move for approval is by Council Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Elliot. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to our approval of minutes regarding a regular council meeting on October 8, 2024. Is there a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Council Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Elliot. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Is there any further business coming for council this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Council McCardo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Elliot. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? This meeting stands adjourned.